Welcome, Thursday, August 10th, City Council Work Session. This time I'll call a meeting in order. We're waiting for our guest, I guess. So Wendy Waik, Waik, Waik. It's Kim here. But meeting is over.
We can do some comedy, Jeff. You and me, brother. I'm here to foil.
In an art gallery at five, between five and seven, that's when most comedy shows are. Dinner hour.
I guess.
I'm really a doctor, bring a little later evening type of thing. So we haven't adopted the agenda. You know.
Okay, I was gonna say we could move some things from next week up to tonight and have a conversation. I'm happy to do it. We have a lot of stuff on our plate. So moved.
They're moving second.
Hi.
Hi. Welcome, Wendy.
Now I'm unmuted. Hi there.
Hello.
Can you see me? Hello?
You hear you.
And you can hear me. Can you see me?
No.
No. Not sure what to do about that. Well, you can hear me, so I guess that's a start. Good evening. Now I'm in panel. There now, maybe you can see me. Oh, look at that.
I'll officially introduce Wendy Waik for from. Public Services Regarding Fee Restructure for Solid Waste. Luckily, yes, we have an expert here.
We do indeed. Hi, Councilwoman Kassever. I apologize for not being able to be there in person this evening. I had a family vacation that couldn't be moved, unfortunately, and I know we're getting to the end of the timeline here, so. Thank you for having me tonight. And I believe the slides are loaded with your clerk. So my intent here tonight is to just kind of walk you through the rate restructure, talk to you about the proposal that we have to kind of accommodate the King County's new utility rate structure and demonstrate a path forward for our ratepayers in Lake Forest Park and move along as we all try to work for zero-waste efforts in circular economy. So is that slide deck loaded, or should I try to find it?
If you have it, it would be better if you could share your screen.
If I have it, okay, let me take a minute to see if I can find it then, so. Give me a second here. Sorry, I'm not more prepared this evening.
The council has the presentation, right? You want to just, it's okay with walking through that?
Oh, sure.
You have it.
So I believe you guys have.
Do you see it, Wendy?
Yes, there it is. Perfect. Okay. So let's get started. So my name is Wendy Waik. I'm Republic Services Community Engagement Manager, and I've been working with King County for the last two years and with Councilwoman Kassever at the King County Solid Waste Advisory Committee as King County is striving to move forward with zero-waste efforts and try to decouple rates from zero-waste initiatives. We are trying to find a financial fiscal path forward and sustainability as well as an environmental one. So I've been with Republic Services about three years and working with the county and our partners on this for the last two. So that's a little bit about me, and this presentation is all about kind of the contract amendment that you have before you to incorporate the change that the county is bringing forward, and you are in good company with the thirty-seven other cities in King County that are trying to make this work with whomever their hauler is to adopt this new utility rate structure while also sort of staying true to the contracts that we have locally to serve our residents in Lake Forest Park. So next slide.
Wendy, is it possible you could talk up just a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Thank you.
Oh, you are. Okay, so let me. Headphones, is that better?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, you bet.
Okay, you guys, I apologize. You think after three years we'd have this remote presentation and partnership. Okay, Matt, how are we doing?
Good, good.
And I apologize again for not being before you in person. It was my intent to be there in person because I know it helps to kind of have that personal connection, but again, family commitments and not knowing how this was going to work with timing this summer, so I would look forward to the opportunity to get in front of you guys in person at some point in the near future. But given it's August and family vacations, I appreciate your grace and tolerance while I do this virtually this evening. So again, Wendy Waik, Republic Services, I've been at the company about three and a half years. I've been working with King County and all of our cities in the last two years to try to implement this new utility model for rates that the county is trying to bring forward. As you might know, their landfill is filling up and they need to figure out some long-range disposal plans. In the meantime, this is the short-term fix to try to make sure their infrastructure is maintained while we promote the REPLUS pledge that I think you guys adopted recently. And also try to honor the contract that we have to try to keep rates as low as possible, yet as effective as possible for our residents. So this is a complete exercise in intergovernmental community relations and collaboration to try to do climate action policy as well as financial sustainability with the ratepayers that are actually paying for this at the end of the day. So. Okay, so we all don't really have a choice. This is the county bringing this new dynamic and infrastructure plan forward with the rates that are coming forward. So this inter-local between King County and Lake Forest Park, as well as how it impacts the contract you have with the public services. We all had to figure out a path forward. We have to figure it out this fall because this change takes effect on January 1st, 2024. And the main component is rather than a service charge and a disposal charge, the disposal charge is now being broken out into two components. One is this fixed annual charge that's going to be combined with the tipping fees, which is all the trucks we bring in after picking everything up in Lake Forest Park. And the fixed annual charge is this number that King County brings forward and attributes to Lake Forest Park that Republic Services has to incorporate into the rates that we need to bring forward on January 1st. So this whole contract amendment is about trying to do that while also looking back in case we get it wrong, so we can have an adjustment every year. So that's kind of the model of this and and your partner in us and Waste Management and Recology and all the other cities have each figured out a path forward, and we in Waste Management have figured out this combined commercial rate, whereas Recology has done a line item on customer bills. So that's kind of the big picture of what you're looking at this evening. So next slide. This is the high-level view of what the municipal solid waste disposal look system looks like in King County. There's thirty-seven cities trying to work together with King County to achieve our zero-waste and circular economy goals. So high-level, King County is trying to manage the solid waste system. And thirty-seven cities have different contracts with different haulers, and there's a whole different component of unincorporated areas that work with the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commission. So all of these intergovernmental agencies are trying to find a path forward to help the county implement this zero-waste utility model rate system structure. Okay, next slide. And this is just a slide to remind you guys of the REPLUS pledge that I know Councilwoman Kassever is intimately familiar with. We've been working on it for two years. The county brought this forward in January. I think so far they have twenty-seven cities that have signed on to commit to working with the county and their haulers on promoting zero-waste goals. It's tied to the fact that the landfill is filling up and it recognizing the fact that historically King County revenue was brought in by volume, and we're trying to switch that paradigm by getting to this rate restructure that again sets infrastructure with a fixed annual charge and funding that infrastructure while then figuring out how to continue finding billing with the tonnage that crosses the scale house every time we pick something up at Lake Forest Park Homes and bring them to the King County transfer stations. Okay, so next slide. And this, for your information and your residents' information, is just kind of how utility model rate design works. In general, there's this fixed infrastructure as well as variable use costs. And this kind of sets the high-level picture of what King County was trying to do two years ago and bringing this forward and what you're probably familiar with with your RADA utilities and electric utilities. There's infrastructure and there's variable use charges. So rate design is critical in any sort of infrastructure utility that you have, and that's where King County is moving forward, and that's what this whole exercise is about. So next slide. And then this is a traditional tipping fee, which is all volume-based versus the utility rate model again, which is this basic infrastructure funded before you get to the variable cost. So this slide is meant to show you that this new rate restructure shows the component that's brought out by the fixed annual charge to support that infrastructure versus the tipping fee, which is based on the volume we bring in. And then the two are combined going forward to bring some stability to predicting and managing costs and sustainability for the county going forward and all of us that are tied in to this system in King County. So it's meant to be revenue-neutral, but it's rather than sort of all volume-based, two components going forward. Okay, so next slide. Okay, and then it's fixed annual charge model for this new utility rate was based on extensive stakeholder engagement for two years. They talked to all manner of cities and haulers through Mizwak, through consultants, through trying to figure it out. And the majority of stakeholders determined that this fixed annual charge paradigm was sort of the easiest to understand and the easiest to implement. So it took about a year and a half to get there. We were trying to make it work last year to bring it forward in 2022. We just couldn't get there. So 2023 is where we are now, really making it work with all the different thirty-seven contracts that needed to be updated and communication with staff and council members to help kind of bring this forward. And this is the best we can do. It's the unique model here in King County and in the state to try to go forward with a revenue-neutral model that recognizes this infrastructure that needs to be maintained while at the same time trying to reduce volume based on circular economy goals. So next slide. And again, this this rate restructure utility model is taking effect on January 1st, 2024, so we don't have a lot of choice, but what we are trying to do with the contract amendment this evening is to incorporate this paradigm that the county is bringing forward and align it with the contract that we have with your city. Incorporate the FAC, the Fixed Annual Charge with the variable rate and then make those rates as clear and transparent to your residents and businesses as they see their new rates coming forward in the fall that will take effect in January. So as usual, the disposal side of your rates and the service side of your rates always increase by CPI every year, the inflationary index. And the difference here is that the disposal side is going to have two components to it that are related again to this utility model that we're trying to bring forward with the county going forward for years to come. Okay, so next slide. And then this is an example of how the fixed annual charge is combined with the tipping fee to create this composite commercial rate. The Republic is calculating on the back end in coordination with your staff to include in rates that will be posted on January 1st. And this FAC, the Fixed Annual Charge, Lake Forest Park gets an allocation of the overall tonnage that's coming in through the county. So King County is giving us that number. We're incorporating it with the rates as well as the tipping fee they're giving us for the trucks that cross the line. And we're putting that forward in the rates going forward. And what the contract amendment also does is give us an opportunity to look kind of after the fact and see if we got an overage or an underage and make an adjustment the following year going forward to make sure that all of the data and all of the volume is transparent and is able to be adjusted depending on if the county's estimate actually was the reality for the following year. So there's an example of the map on the right there, but it's rather complicated, but the county, because we know from historical data what the estimate is going to be, we won't know what the actual is until we have a chance to go back and look at it a year later. So this is a huge case study for rate modeling for graduate students, I think, and those of us in the solid waste industry that are looking at this, but for your average ratepayer, they will kind of be agnostic in how the backend math is done, but for those of us kind of tracking this and making sure that it's meeting the policy objective as well as the financial sustainability objectives, we have a real opportunity here to make it really clear whether the county's estimates are actually meeting the realities as we go forward year after year going forward. Okay, so next slide. So again, your ratepayers won't see much of a difference on their bills. The bills will look the same. Rates, of course, are going up every year by inflation. And this calculation on the back end is just the counties, the cities, and the haulers reconciliation of the way the county is dividing the rates to accommodate for this fixed annual charge going forward. So the customers that you will hear from probably won't see much of a difference. I don't expect to get much pushback, but if you do, the county is offering some bill inserts and some added communications. I'm also standing by. My team is standing by. I think most ratepayers in Lake Forest Park won't see much of a difference. And they won't understand necessarily what the backend math calculations are in moving this utility model. But you in leadership and you and your staff should absolutely know where the numbers are coming from because these rates do get carried forward to your residents and businesses. So ratepayer bills will look the same, but the way it's calculated is kind of this how the sausage is made on the backend and it is rather complicated, but for most folks, the bill is still a bill. There won't be a separate line item. There won't be an increase in cost. There won't be a decrease in cost. It's just an added. It's just, the bill will be the same, but the way the backend math is done is just going to be a little different going forward after January 1st. Okay, so next slide. And then this is just my reminder to you all and your staff and what we do in your community as often as possible is to remind people what to throw and where to throw it. So recycling, compost, garbage, we want to divert as much material from landfill as possible. We're trying to conserve that airspace that the landfill has and recycling, we've been doing this for fifty years in the county and compost and organics. I don't know if you guys know about the organics law that was passed in 2020. You'll certainly be hearing more about it going forward. There's a huge effort to try to divert as much as possible from the landfill going forward in both the recycling material and the organics material. And so Republic Services is committed to working with the city and your residents and your businesses to try to do as much as we can to help people know what to throw, put the right materials in the right bin and keep it empty, clean, and dry all day long. So for the public record and for you guys, different materials go in different bins and get processed differently and go to end markets accordingly, and we are partners with you and partners with King County in helping do as much of that diversion as possible. So this is just a slide that shows you guys kind of the basic categories of how to move forward. And I think next slide is my closing slide around Republic Services being in many communities all over the country, trying to do the right thing with our materials, working with our communities, working with sustainability efforts, trying to do diversion, trying to do electrification, trying to do infrastructure investments any way we can to partner with the city in meeting climate action goals and meeting our own sustainability goals going forward. So we are proud to be in your community, proud to be a partner in this work, and proud to work with you and the state going forward and whatever we can to meet all of our climate action goals any way, shape, and form that we can. So with that, I'll take questions and be happy to talk to you further about any questions you have about the King County rate restructure, sustainability, recycling, organics, invite you all to a tour down in South Seattle where we have a recycling center and a new learning center. Whatever you guys need, we're here to support you.
Wendy, I'll go ahead and kick it off. Wendy, I know that your company and the county have been working on some some sort of testing models, as it were, and in those, are you seeing that the bills to customers are looking pretty similar to the way they are now, or should we expect to see some kind of change in the charges to our citizens?
I think every year, Councilwoman Kassever, you're going to see increases based on inflation. And this rate restructure is meant to be revenue-neutral, and the combined composite rate model that we've put forward allows us as a partnership to see if we got the math right in the following year. And if we overcharge, give a rebate back the following year with a rate adjustment. And if we've undercharged, make an increase to accommodate that change. So the county is working on two-year-old data as they put together the fixed annual charge for each city. This fall, we'll have those numbers here in the next month. And because it's in an estimate, past performance should indicate future performance, but if the math is off, our accountants everywhere have a chance to make an adjustment to make sure that that folks aren't overpaying or underpaying to sustain the King County solid waste system.
Okay, so basically what you're saying is you don't know yet what the charges will look like for January 1st, but we should know something in the fall?
We should know in September. King County is going to release the data in September, and then we can calculate the rates and then we'll let your team know what the rates will look like, and then they'll have a chance to to review it, make sure the math is correct based on all the different intergovernmental contracts we have. And then we'll take the sixty days to alert residents and put it on the website and then take effect on January 1st. Yes, so we have about a two- or three-month kind of notification period. But your team absolutely checks the math from the county and from us to make sure that the rates reflect, they understand that we all have and how this is going to work.
Thank you. That's very helpful, Wendy.
Thanks. Thinking about the customer perspectives, clarification. So right now customers pay for garbage and then they get garbage recycling for free. I just want to confirm that part is not changing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Easy, thank you.
Soft fish.
It's free.
Yeah.
Your comments, Waik, sorry, for your comments, but I'm wondering, is there any possibility of working out some kind of senior discount? We have a lot of seniors in our community and they've been wondering about that.
You know, we can absolutely work with your staff on that, and we do that in other communities, and the key component there is making sure the city helps us identify who those seniors are or vulnerable populations, and usually that's tied to kind of the water utility. So if you know who those citizens are that need some rate relief, we need a significant partnership to identify who those customers are and and what level of subsidy to provide for them. And then we can adjust rates accordingly. If the city presumably doesn't have some added budget to help cover those costs, we can spread that across the ratepayers throughout the city to help support those citizens that might need a little extra help. So yeah, we can absolutely look at that and be happy to.
You did a fantastic job because they don't have any questions.
I was told many times to be brief and be brilliant and be quiet, so. Yeah, I'm sorry if I talk too fast, but and I just have to let you guys know, this has been a complicated process for two years, and your staff has been exceptional in trying to work with us through working with the county to identify how to put this into a contract amendment. And your Councilwoman Kassever has been involved in this work endlessly for hours with the county and trying to make sure that it's fair and equitable and meets the objectives at the county and the city level. So I figured you guys would be an easy sell because you've got some experts in the room there.
Yes, we do. Well, I guess we'll let you go, and thank you very much, Wendy. Go enjoy your vacation.
And if you have any further questions, let me know, and then I'll look forward to following up with you guys on the twenty-fourth and working with your team going forward and really appreciate your collaboration, partnership, not only with us but with the county to help us all achieve our climate action goals. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thanks, Wendy.
All right, good night, you guys.
Just so you guys know, you can all call my wife, and she can tell you which can just throw whatever in because I get told every day.
Well, speaking of spouses, I mean, she said, breathe, be succinct and be quiet. That's what my half says to me.
All right. We will move on from garbage to right-of-way tree vegetation maintenance policies and procedures. We have our city attorney and the city public works director.
Sure, I'll start. So I've worked with Frank since before on this, and I think we've had some issues come up recently, and Jeff and I and Scott Walker were talking about this, so it seems like we probably have some new things to bring the council's attention or want to bring it to your attention again. Because there's, you know, we have this issue all the time going on, but in 2016, a new case came out that said cities are liable, give a duty to provide reasonably safe roads for ordinary travel. Seems reasonable, except there used to be an exception, we called it an exception, for roadside vegetation. The, you know, the blackberries that grow into the street from the neighbor's property, the cities weren't liable for. Now we are, if we have notice that they are causing hazardous conditions in the roadway. And so we're on we have a different point of liability since 2016. And in your packet was the WCIA policy consideration on trees. And really, and you'll see it was from 2016. But it also, I think the same applies to vegetation. And it applies to, say, trees or vegetation that are, you know, growing, you know, planted roots in the right-of-way and to something adjacent to the right-of-way that overgrows into our right. And so the issues are, was the city on notice, actual notice, you know, the public works group person go by, made a note, those blackberries are growing in, we've got to cut those, or it's been there for five years and we should have done something about it and we're going to be held liable for those that were there so long we shouldn't see it. So I guess when I was talking to Jeff, we talked about one thing in Lake Forest Park, I think people particularly value their trees, their landscaping. You don't quite know where the right-of-way is, and your bush or your limbs are growing into the right-of-way and people may not be very pleased when they get a notice saying that must be cut back. So I think that was part of the reason they said they come to council, because we think there's some of those situations coming up. And, you know, the people need to be aware that they're probably going to have to cut some things back. I also love the natural look, but there's going to probably be some.
Before we go, can you describe the ramifications of not cutting them back? Meaning the property owner, property owner does not cut them back?
The city should cut them back?
We have to cut them back. We had a case a while ago on 178, and one of four, I believe, that it was property owner, but he was a junk tour situation, Mr. For Tony, it was a pretty big deal. So is that kind of conflict to jurisdictions or is it?
Well, I'm not sure about jurisdictions. I would say whoever got in the accident and was hurt by the overgrown bushes is going to sue both the city and the owner of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things I recall, maybe it was Kenmore, they would put out in their newsletter that you need to. you need to trim any responsible for it. And when I was living in Seattle, I was renting a house and we got a notice from the city and said, cut back the bushes, in this case, the alley, or we'll come do it and we'll charge you. Are are we doing both of those in terms of Kenmore's example of they put out in their newsletter, you need to your right-of-way priority as well as noticing people when they don't? And if they don't correct it, they get fined or the city will do it and then back charge.
I believe we do put some down in the spring. I could confirm that. Sort of the newsletters we started, and that's kind of the part of the discussions that we have, we're going to start tonight is to say, okay, what can we do? Can we backcharge it for our efforts or our next favor, their efforts to do that? And what sort of timeframe do you have, President, if they, we notice something, give them a notice saying, give them a cut back your vegetation and then go thirty days. Probably start against those kind of things that I would like to try to find out. From council, how they approach this.
I would approach it by looking at other jurisdictions and see what the models are rather than just asking. I'd say, well, they have about three days. As opposed to, you know, what do other jurisdictions do so that we're not doing something that's out of ordinary that we might see from other jurisdictions? There should be other models out there that you could come back to it and say, in Woodinville, Kirkland, Seattle, they give the owners two-week notice and backcharge them through their utility rates or some other.
So what's the trigger for telling them they have to cut it? You know, because I could see different people having different standards. Like if you just have some blackberries growing up along the side of the road, you know, and they're not blocking any visibility. I mean, how, what's the high priority? So who gets to decide and what, what are the criteria that you that you use currently or that you would anticipate using? Or are there other situations where there are some general guidelines that other cities use? Because obviously, if you have, you know, I can see that there could be some very obvious things. But to what degree of nuance does it go down to? You know, like, oh, your bushes just are growing a little bit into the right-of-way, please trim them, for example.
Thank you. So, Attorney Pratt and Dr. Pargo, I'm not clear whether you're asking for a discussion from us where you get some ideas or whether you are actually asking for us to create a policy that is written and in turn, and actually turns into an ordinance that we then use to provide exactly what both my colleagues have talked about here, which is the parameters, you know, what triggers, how many days, how far into the right-of-way, what kind of, you know, all those things. So what are you asking us for here?
For tonight, it's just education purposes for the council to know that we do have a problem. It's going to cost, have some cost to us unless we're able to backcharge to the rest of it. And then at that point, start talking about what our policy should be like if that is.
Yeah, I I don't know that you need ordinance. Because I think, well, I would need to see the ordinance say to be into the right-of-way. And then there's a, you know, site distance issue of one foot into the right-of-way. So I don't think that's the, you know, probably appropriate about policy, policy like that. But I I think I was looking at making council where this is a city liability issue. Sometimes we think, oh, well, it's the owner's problem. No, it's our problem. And so there is liability issue, I think, maybe we've used door hangers in the past and then maybe a little lenient. And, you know, somebody maybe getting that notice now and there's a real problem, may call their council member, be great. So, so what's our practice right now, I guess? What should we do? How often do we do it? What's the reaction you're getting? I'm sorry.
We have Councilmember Rill and we had Deputy Mayor French and then Phil. So he's going to be Phil. He's kind of referred to Phil.
Not referred to, but referred.
Sorry, sorry.
Close, we're close.
So, do you mind, just I'm just curious what we talk about right-of-way? So I know from the typical King County map from the Department of Services, we tend to have about a sixty-foot right-of-way throughout our city, but the average width pavement is somewhere between twenty-four and twenty-eight feet. So that's an extensive amount of right-of-way that most folks have somewhat adopted to their front yard developments, whether or not. So I do, are we supposed to be guarded in sixty-foot slots? Or is this like only encumbering?
The active safety portion of the right-of-way. Reasonably safe roads for ordinary travel.
Okay, so if there's a sidewalk or sidewalk way or whatever shoulder that people walk on with, considering that part of that safe walkway for travel, but it's not, it's not unlimited to the to the full width. Okay, just total clarification on that.
So as Jeff and I thought through this, I think the experience that I've had is this is something. That's our associate planner and in coordination with public works, how this works. It's either called in or served violation. I think we're not much to have an order, have it adopted by ordinance, which is probably good, at least the administrative policy on guidelines from these enforcement forces that is approaching the sidewalk, the walkway, pathway, traffic lane, border of the motorized vehicles, et cetera, to identify that. Actually, look about two weeks of the initial notice, putting them on notice. And the idea is to get compliance, not to keep them with the sticks. So you usually go out two weeks, you see, get in contact with them, give them some time to comply, take a viable back, I'll take a look at it. We have to assess deadlines of which. To tolerate that. Both boys can also take photographs. So you have evidence to get, but ultimately, at the end of the day, yes, always good, just clear it and then get counsel that reads, charge property for that. Also, as far as beating the property, if they do not pay those fees. Yes, it's strong. It has, you really want compliance that education. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Merrill. I was just checking with the mirror a second ago. I my initial comment about one seventy-eighth and one oh four, if I recall correctly, and this shows, I'm getting really long into that maybe way prior to the tenure of some folks here. But there was an enforcement action about a laurel hedge that had approached upon the the sightlines and the cross of the sidewalk. And multiple, to to Mr. Hill's point, multiple encouragements to be compliant. Please cut this back, please cut this back. And ultimately, Public Works had to come in. And it was a serious amount of of timber that had to be taken out for safety of the community, for pedestrians and vehicular safety. So I think we already had this happen in the past in terms of your your question of the word re recouping the cost in my vernacular. And I think we need, we we should formalize it. I think that's really important.
If you use code enforcement, you already have it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, have it. You can recover your cost to abate, that's what the, if you use code.
I have, I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Bodie because I have a person at our church that has a whole lot different view of what blocking a sidewalk is that I do. I can say if it's a guy or a girl or a man, but a few times I'm sidewalks and I was like, really? So we probably will have to come up with kind of a standard. What we think that is, is the ones you're going to get complaints for, the people that you go look at, you're going to say, ah, this isn't quite as bad as it sounds. But it's just so you know, it's going to be a difference. Yes.
Thanks. I have two questions. First, what do we do about situations that are hard to remedy? Say a tree's root is pushing up the sidewalk and creating a safety hazard.
There's actually something on next door going around, I think, about that right now, the people next door. And I don't think Seattle, the shoreline, putting down a bunch of trees, but the roots are all growing in a sidewalk. And I don't read that either, but my wife gets on. So there's something where that's actually at.
Yeah, I think in the old days, we used to mark the spot, so you could see it and you wouldn't trip over it. I don't think that's.
That back when we didn't have seatbelts either.
You want to dress formal, get less. Number two on it.
Oh, yes. Yeah. It is that exact example where we have the the march path on the north side, now there's unmarked, you drive, you felt, you reported it, Public Works. Jeff Bailey got crews out there and we grabbed those down and create that section, you know, see appropriate thing to. Very responsive that, maybe claim the city, but they ended up giving us a great action on our part, not to just ignore it, but the address. They saw that, it's recently, it's last summer.
You were brand new, probably lost in all this other. Yeah, individuals have areas where they think that vegetation is unsafe. What's the best way to communicate that with the city? Put in service with your request.
Could you speak up?
Yeah, they can do that. Call in for a service request.
Okay, so I don't know how to do that.
Or you can also. Positive, I'll watch it correct. It's actually very easy. One other question, I mean, relative to outside through vegetation, the other thing is we have a lot of slopes. We have C S on forty-seventh near customer, customer, up to customer, customers neighborhood. Other places that with the rains, the things start sliding. Is that, where does that fall? I mean, it starts, you eventually see the sidewalk being or whatever, the facility of a sidewalk down to two, two feet as opposed to what should be like five feet. Is that on us or is it on the first not slope? How does that?
Is it an actual sidewalk or just?
Let's say it's paved asphalt or concrete. I would say it's the Jason Comar that's responsible. Okay, because it happens a lot.
Well, unless we came, you know, a very clear problem, then the city would need to clear this. But trying to get me Jason.
Yeah, often what happens too is you get the vegetation that moves out and when the ground kind of pushes out as well, then vegetation gets pulled back of the you got things to feel to me, but.
Well, I would say, we have, we do have a report possible code violation and then report a problem. We're talking about being a code violation, but I think folks have probably used the other one, you internally reroute as needed. So that request for service is probably the best place for to point people to at this point in time.
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
Tracy? Where do we go on this? Just remember, hopefully, things are starting to lighten up a little bit. Seeing people apply for jobs, so allow our positions in public works here pretty soon because everything, we all come up with a lot of great ideas, but somewhere along the line, they got to get down to the booth, set out to do it. So hopefully, but I think this is something, we've been talking about this for ever.
Yeah, just that's kind of a final point on this, anything that we do is going to take time, code enforcement, public works, our operations superintendent, there's going to be a lot of vegetation that's involved. Has the issue, so that's going to diminish some of the abilities for us.
Doubtly know that we're going to run into a situation that the homeowner cannot do it, they don't have the ability, they're handicapped. We've run into that, we've tried this, we've run into that quite often and then we have to have our hearts out and say, okay, well, we'll take care of this. So we'll be back. That's simple. Yes.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for your comments, though, Ms. Merrill, because it made, it reminded me of an issue that I have seen where on some of our steep slopes where trees are growing and some of our old bimapples are aging out and are covered in ivy and have not been addressed. You can see the problem coming, right? You can see that that tree is going to come down next big storm, next snowstorm, whatever. And that sometimes these trees are on the properties of just kind of people we were talking about. And that's why they haven't been maintained. Would this? Where, where does the city's liability or responsibility or whatever come into play in those type of situations? Where if that tree falls, because it's on a slope and the road is at the bottom, it's going to come across the road. But what we take, we told you, I understand with it, as has happened in my neighborhood a number of times. So what what role can the city play in that sort of situation?
From my perspective, once it falls, we know city has a problem, get it out of there. And then until then, it's how much notice did we have that it was going to fall? So from my perspective, it's a very case-by-case thing. I mean, I was just involved in sort of a notice from planning to public works of those trees are dangerous. Public Works got involved and is, you know, doing what they need to do with those particular trees. So hopefully, it's something like that where we have noticed ahead of time. These are a problem, take them down. I know that's how staff deals with it, because I just saw a couple right ago.
Okay, so, but if a citizen were to call in and say, my neighbor's property has some trees that look like they're about ready to come down and hit the road, then what do you do?
Usually, you would have the arborist contact. Probably started outing these trees because it, it may be that they come down as emergency, maybe we will apply that afterwards. So that's, that's. Well, that extends the question. Thank you, Vice Chair Calsiver, seniors who can't afford to to fund that. Do we have a, and this is on us as policymakers, to figure out a way to make sure that those folks are not burdened is, you know, consequently by the removal process.
I know that there's been talk about putting a discount in for tree removal for low-income seniors and disabled individuals. I think we're going to look at that, that the new, when the new schedule comes around for next year. And so if you want, you know, another additional thing.
Agreed. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember. Oh, so thank you, Attorney Pratt. So we've been notified that you have a liability risk. Do we need to do anything on the council? If we already have in place administrative procedures to manage that. So are you recommending the council do anything different other than you just informed us that we have a liability risk and that administratively, we've already got processes and procedures in place to address that?
I don't see that the council needs to adopt or change anything right now. This was just for awareness and maybe it's public works. I think there's an emphasis on it right now and some things coming up. And, you know, they may need to change some things or bring other things to your attention as that continues to happen, but we wanted to start with this. No, I'm not asking you to do anything that liabilities then.
Hey, folks, we run out of time. We got ten minutes to get upstairs. So this time we'll return, we'll move upstairs. If you have a question for them, they're right there.